Hello Tacoma!
Hi Tacoma!
We have a special guest here today.
Yes!
Would you like to introduce our special guest before we check in with our zones?
Yes! Friends, today we have the privilege of having our Tacoma City Council member John Hines with us today, here at TV Classroom.
We get to learn all about the city council?
Yes! I have lots of questions!
Why we have a city council?
Yes!
And what Mr. Hines says?
Yes! So thank you for being here.
Thank you!
Before we ask our questions, let's check in with our zones. Every day, we check in with our zone, every single day. So friends at home decide, how are you feeling today? What's your body feeling? What's your brain feeling? What are your emotions feeling? Are they in different zones or are they in the same zone? Ms. Ozon, should we tell our zones or should we do our statue?
Um, let's tell our zones.
That would be not very fair to throw that on Mr. Hines.
I agree.
We sometimes do a freeze frame where we decide what our zone is and then we act that way and they have to decide how we feel. Okay friends, Ms. Ozon, how are you feeling today?
I'm in the yellow zone today. I'm a little bit anxious just about the future, moving forward. And it's making me a little distracted, making me a little uncomfortable.
Okay.
How are you?
Um, I'm in the green zone today.
Good!
Yep, doing good!
Good!
Mr. Hines, how are you?
I feel like I'm in the green zone, I'm excited to be here.
Mr. Kevin?
What was the question?
What zoner, well, I should tell us what zone he's in. What zone are you in today?
No, I'm in the green zone, teachers.
Oh, good, I'm so glad.
And it's really nice to have Mr. Hines here.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Alright, let's go over our three personal standards.
Today and every day, when we come together, we agree to:
Show respect.
Make good decisions.
And solve problems. And one way we show respect, every single episode here on the TV Classroom, is by holding space to honor our indigenous lands and people.
We do that by inviting you to look outside your window, look at the sky, look at the trees, your surroundings. Our physical space stands on the historical and ancestral lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We acknowledge the Puyallup Tribe of Indians community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. We make this acknowledgement as part of our work to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism and unjust treatment.
Such an important thing we do every day.
It is. Taking the space, the time, for a statement and an acknowledgement.
And a reflection on what we can do to help our community members feel like more of our community.
Yes, I agree.
Alright, welcome to the TV Classroom!
Thank you for having me, it's great!
I'm so excited to learn. Now, I have an interesting personal connection. My granddad in Australia was part of his city council and was the mayor at one point in his little town in Australia.
I didn't know that.
So I'm interested, as you talk, to hear like how similar it is in their country and how different it is, as I'm thinking about the stories he used to tell me.
Okay, very interesting.
I'm excited.
Will you start by telling us what is the city council?
Okay, well that's a great question. So the city council, the state Tacoma has a council of eight members, so there's one through eight, and then the mayor, and the mayor sits on the city council with the rest of us. We're elected by the citizens to make a lot of decisions around the things that really impact your lives. So everything from how streets get fixed, to police and firefighters, to land use and how things are built in our city, those are all the things we are responsible for. I mean, even including the water that comes to your house, the power that powers the things you enjoy, when the rain hits and goes out into the sewer system, that's all stuff the city takes care of.
So if water runoff was killing salmon, we might want to go to our city council about that?
You would, I mean that's a good conversation.
Ah, fifth graders! I wonder who you might write? Just saying.
This reminds me a lot of like our school board, where we have our superintendent and then our elected school board that work together to make decisions.
Yeah, and it's also very similar to that where we have a city manager and she runs the city for most part, and then the council, we are the ones who make the policies like the school board. So we make the rules and then the city manager is the one who executes those rules. Just like in the school district, the school board makes the policies and then the superintendent kind of runs things from there.
Oh, interesting, so interesting.
One thing I would say that's different between the school board and say the city council is the school board, every one of the members, all five of them, can live anywhere in the school district, so they can live anywhere. The city council has five members that we have to live in specific areas of the city. So I represent the west and north end of the city of Tacoma, and then there are four other council members that represent different parts of the city, from the south end, east side, central Tacoma, and then northeast Tacoma.
So you have to live in the place that you represent?
Yeah, for my role. And then there are three council members who represent the entire city. So then there's three at large and five district reps.
Well that makes sense, because then you would understand how community members are feeling in the place where you live, because you live there.
Yeah.
What other questions you have, Ms. Ozon?
Uh, what made you want to be on the Tacoma City Council?
Ooh, it's a good question. You know, from a very early age, my parents had kind of told me about the importance of giving back and kind of helping your community. And my father always used to tell me, you know, "You have gotten so far in your life because people have taken interest in you and care about you and have done things for you, so you should do the same." And from a really young age, I mean, I have papers and things I wrote way back when I was in say, fifth grade, sixth grade, of saying I want to be on the city council. I just always thought government service was a way to give back and really kind of shape my community, and that's always been something I've really thought about. And so from, with that kind of idea of service is important and serving my community is important, I started volunteering as far back as in fifth and sixth grade, doing community service projects, all the way through elementary school, middle school, high school, and into college. And then when I graduated from college, I became a teacher. So I was a high school teacher for a long time, but I still continued to kind of serve and help the community. And that just always was something in my mind. And so, when the opportunity came to run for office and really take on that chance, I decided to do it.
Can you tell us more about what that process is like?
Oh, the process, yes. So, and actually it's a great time to be talking about this, because this is filing week. So council candidates are deciding right now if they want to become city council members and they get to file. So basically, there's a couple pieces of it. The most important piece is you have to file with the Pierce County Auditor to say, "Hey, I want to be a city council member." And that week is this week, you have to sign up. And then you spend the next couple months running for office. And so there's a primary in September. So if there are more than two candidates, you go through a primary election and it narrows it down to two. And then there's a general election in November. And then what you spend your time doing between when you file and when the elections happen is you need to go out and talk to the people you're going to represent. You understand what they want, you know, what they're thinking about, what they want to improve in the city, and you know, how you can help them do that. I think the important thing, I tell a lot of people, is you know, it's important kind of what I think, but it's also more important what the people I represent think and how I can help them kind of navigate and understand the system and be able to achieve what they want. So you're a point about the stormwater conversation. So if a fifth grade student wrote me, who was one of my constituents or one of their parents, you know, I could talk to him about, "Well, here's what the city's doing, and here's what the city has thought about doing, and then what are your questions? What are you concerned about?" If it's salmon and runoff and salmon, okay, well, we can look at policies that we can put in place, like building more rain gardens or, you know, things like that. Or street sweepers going more regularly through neighborhoods. Ways we can kind of put policy in place to kind of address those concerns. And then I would be able to go talk to my council members, because there's eight of us plus the mayor, and say, "Hey, here's what I'm hearing from my constituents." And constituents is a big word for the people you represent. This is what they're interested in. And then I could help try to make policies around that and get my council members to agree with that. Because you have to get five people to vote on anything.
So fifth graders, you live there too. It would be really amazing if you got some fifth grade letters. They've been learning all about salmon and the issue we're having with salmon that are returning to spawn and they're dying. Almost 90% of the salmon population that's returning to spawn is dying because of tire chemicals.
Yes.
Isn't that interesting? So, something you just said that reminded me, something that my granddad said was, "You have to listen." And he always said, when I was talking to my constituents, my job was to be an open ear and listen, and then use my voice when I return to the council to help their voices be heard, not necessarily my opinion. And that's exactly what you just said!
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot of work, a lot of time.
It does take a lot of time, but I really do enjoy it. I mean, like I said, I tell people, I'm a teacher and so I like to learn, and this is the greatest job to learn. I mean, I learn so much and on so many different topics, and I like to listen and hear what people think and try to figure out, you know, how do we, you know, going back to your, what your premises or your principles when you come here, it's like solving problems. I like to help people solve problems. I like to help people kind of navigate systems. And it helps to do that kind of job. And so people call me, trying to think what I had the other day. Someone had called me yesterday because someone had illegally dumped something out in front of their house. And so I'm like, "Okay, well hey, here's who you need to call and here's who you can report it to." And then I emailed that person for them, said, "Hey, just keep an eye out for this." And then they emailed me back and said, "Hey, they came and got my stuff." I mean, just simple things like that. You know, as your students probably get, or you all are helping them with this, things like a city council seem very complex. There's just a lot of pieces, and you're like, "How do I even start? Who do I talk to?" And so part of my job is just helping people understand who to talk to.
So if a student out there watching thought that this sounded like a really cool idea, how would they start? Because we have kindergarten through fifth grade students, what should they start doing now in order to prepare to maybe run for city council in the future? What are some of those really important things and experiences they need to have?
Yeah, you know, I think, one thing I always tell people is find something you're really passionate about and really try to get experience leading in that thing. So if you're really passionate about stormwater and salmon, or if you're really passionate about books and schools and libraries, then really go in and try to see what you can do to get leadership experience around that. Really try to see, you know, how you can make an impact on things that are around you. Find other people that you know who are also passionate about it. So if you're in fifth grade and your other classmates are really excited about it, like get them together and together come and talk. That's the thing that I think people, really, I would encourage people to think about is, get that experience leading and kind of bringing people together, listening to concerns. That's going to be the thing that's going to help you the most. And you're going to gain all the skills you need to be on city council if you just pick one area and get passionate about it and follow that through. I know some people think like, "Wow, I need to do this or do this." And it's, I would never tell anybody to do something they didn't like just because they thought it was going to help them become a city council member or get to some goal. I would say, "Find something you're really passionate about and then follow that as far as you can." Because that's going to really get you there. And another thing about running for office is people have to think that you can do it. They have to see you as a leader, they have to see you as capable. And so, if you're following something you're passionate about and you're saying this, and you show people, like, "Here I'm passionate about something, here's some things I've done, here's how I brought people along, here's how I became a leader in that." People will believe like, "Oh yeah, this person could do it." And then it helps support you when you want to go forward.
Awesome.
I, one of the things I did before I came onto the council was I was on the library board. So I was a library trustee for Tacoma Public Library. And because I've loved books, I've always been passionate about it. You know, sorry. I, you know, have been a long time Tacoma Public Schools, or Tacoma Public Library patron. So I got on the board and, you know, that was something I was really passionate about. And so we got to talk about things from, you know, more digital resources, which, you know, I think many of your students will have access during this time. We've talked about extending hours and like opening up libraries on Sundays. Most recently, before I came onto council, I don't know if y'all heard this, but the library got rid of fees and fines in Tacoma.
What? I didn't know that!
There's no more fines on books anymore.
That's wonderful, that creates access for everybody.
Yes, so we're not new. I mean, some libraries have done that for years. And we had, when I was on the board, we talked about it. It's like, you know, like, do we really want to keep fees and fines? How much money do we actually generate from them? Is it actually a motivation to get people to return books? And all the research out there shows that it's not. Actually, all it does is when people rack up huge fines, they stop using the library, which is not what we wanted. So this past month, the library decided, "We're not going to do fees and fines anymore."
I did not know that, that's amazing!
Yeah, so that was a conversation I had back when I was on the board that they kind of finished off here now that I'm on council.
Interesting.
And that's something else the city has control of, we also control the public library.
That's a huge shift in the system of our city.
It is. And a shift towards equity.
Yeah, exactly.
That's wonderful.
It's been a real priority for us on the council is that idea of, you know, more equitable access to resources across the community.
Now people can use the library freely and not feel ashamed if something happened to a book?
Yeah.
But make sure to return them if there is.
And take care of them when you have them.
Please return your textbooks, please return your books.
It's a resource that we share as a community in a way that people don't have to spend money on books and still be able to learn and enjoy reading, which is so important!
So you're on the city council, is that your full-time job?
No, no it is not. I do that, it's part-time, part-time job, so I do it kind of outside, I'm on a normal day job. My normal day job is I work for the school district here in Tacoma. I'm an instructional facilitator. So I was a high school history teacher for a while and then I came and worked for Tacoma Public Schools about five years ago, hard to believe. And so I do that on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and on Tuesdays, I do council full-time.
Wow.
So, keeps you busy and then, you know, I have meetings at night and things like that. But it's good. And then along with, I guess I would share for your students, you know, as long with being on council, I get to serve on some other boards and commissions too as part of a council member. So the one my son loves the most is I'm on the Zoo Trek Authority. So I'm on the board that oversees Northwest Trek and the Point Defiance Zoo.
Oh, that must be a fun board to be on.
It is very fun. We got to do some animal visits, some behind-the-scenes tours. My son says that's the coolest job I have. So, I think so, it's pretty fun. And along with that, there's some other boards and commissions I serve on, but yeah.
That's an important one, the zoo and Northwest Trek, because we know they do a lot of conservation efforts and teach a lot about empathy at the zoo.
And they really love our community of Tacoma.
They do.
Yes, it's a great organization.
Wow, city council, that's a big job.
It really is.
Yeah.
I bet some of our students are making plans right now for what they're going to do in the future as city council members.
I hope so.
I hope so.
Yeah.
That would be amazing.
I won't be doing this forever, so.
There'll be a spot eventually. And I hope that if you have some ideas, if you have some issues in your community that you're noticing as students, you're never too young to speak up. And I hope that you choose to either call, email, or write whoever your representative is. So you might want to find out who your representative is, have an adult help you, and reach out. They want to hear your voice too. Reach out, maybe get a group of friends together to write an opinion piece together to send in. And they want to hear your voice, you are part of our community too, and you matter.
Yeah, you are the, you are the future of the community. I mean, let's be honest here. And you know, our goals, I mean, I would love to see more of you stay and be, live in Tacoma and go forward and lead here. I'm very lucky, I've lived in Tacoma my whole life, I've never left this place. And I think I'd like to see more young people have that opportunity, if they choose to.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Awesome, well thank you so much for being here today.
Yes, thank you.
Friends, we hope you learned something about city council that you didn't know before. I'm guessing you probably did.
Mr. Kevin's raising his hand.
Oh, yes, Mr. Kevin?
You know, John, thank you. I'm inspired to return this book that I've had since 1997. So hopefully, just Tacoma Public Library, I got you.
Yeah, I'm on my way. They'll be happy to see that.
I bet they've been missing that book.
Let me just tell you to keep it, you know.
Our gift to you, Mr. Kevin. Alright, let's do our affirmation. This is the time of the day when we get to pause and say positive uplifting things about ourselves before we go off to do independent work or whatever else it is that we're doing.
It's one of my favorite times of the day.
Sounds like a great one.
I think today, our affirmation should be, "I am a leader in my community."
I was going to say, "Or my voice matters in my community." Which one do we want? Both are good.
Do you have to just pick just one?
Yeah.
Why can't we do two?
I'm a leader and my voice matters in my community. Let's do it. I am a leader and my voice matters in my community.
So I'll take a deep breath and say our affirmation. "I am a leader and my voice matters in my community." Excellent job today, Tacoma! We hope you have a great rest of your day and we look forward to seeing you back here next time in our TV classroom!
Bye friends!
Hi, welcome back to Art Class with Ms. Teresa. So today we're going to be drawing Washington State's flower, which is the rhododendron. And we have a bit of a cross breeze going, so if my papers go flying, you got to give me a second and I'll recoup. Okay, so what I did was I searched the internet for drawings of the flower because when I looked at the pictures of the flowers, there were so many bright vibrant colors, I had a really hard time telling the difference between each flower. And the neat thing about this particular plant is that it has clusters of blossoms. So sometimes you'll see like Daisy will have one coming out of its stem. This particular plant, you're going to see lots and lots of little blooms clustered together and so that's how we're going to draw it. We're going to start with the easier version. So, we're going to actually start with the petals. And some petals on plants are really short, but these ones tend to be kind of long, almost banana shape-like. So we're going to make kind of looks like, kind of a carrot. And in the middle of that, we're going to draw a line. And then we're going to make kind of little Vs. And that shows kind of a bend. And you're going to go all the way up that line. So I'm still working up the leaf. Okay. So just like for texture of skin, like if you look at your hand, you're going to have different lines too. Plants are very similar, so... So to show the edges, I'm gonna make little tiny lines on the sides. Okay. And so what I noticed about this particular plant, it looks like it has five petals, but they're kind of formed really close together. So if you wanna make them almost like connecting blobs. So they connect in the middle. And they have these parts that are long and kind of curly in the middle. And so you could either draw them as little circles if they're front-facing. Or if you'd like, you can draw them off to the side where they kinda look like little worms. And there's lots and lots of them, so... Okay, so here's my first flower. And to show that it has depth and that it's not a flat surface, we're going to make some lines coming out of the middle. And I've noticed these flowers before in people's yards and also at Point Defiance. They have an entire garden that have all sorts of varieties of these flowers. And so they don't just come in one color, which I thought was kind of neat. And sometimes I go walking there or bike riding. Sometimes you'll see animals like raccoons. Raccoons are great wildlife. You really shouldn't feed them because they have the skills to get their own food. And they become really dependent on people feeding them. And so they kind of lose some of that natural ability. So they're fun to look at, but they don't really need people food. Okay, so there's my first flower. So I'm just going to keep on making them over... So this is gonna be my front flower. But remember that they have five petals. What would be kind of cool too is if you wanted to bring a sketchbook out to like the Rhododendron Garden at Point Defiance and draw what you see. Or if you want to take a picture of it with your phone or a camera, it's always nice to have a reference. And I like to try to draw things that I've never drawn before. And when I was growing up, I used to draw roses all the time. And then I got really good at drawing roses. But this is a fairly new thing for me, so it took me a bit of practice. Okay. And we're just gonna keep on going. So they're not completely round. They have some texture to them. And you can put as many as you want in your cluster. It just needs to have more than a few. So you're not really going to see three of them clustered together. You might see eight or nine or seven. Personally, I like odd numbers, so... Okay. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm going to draw the stem part. So I'm gonna draw kind of the stick that they're on. It's kind of like two lines. And to give it a little bit of texture, I'm gonna put kind of broken lines on it. And then we're going to make some more leaves. And the leaves are pretty big, so they're a lot bigger than the flowers. And I'm gonna do the same thing with this leaf where I'm gonna have one line down the center. And there's that asymmetrical word again. It's going to be pretty identical on both sides. So what are some fun flower facts? Well, the flowers will often get visitors, not just humans, but bees and butterflies. And they collect the pollen, which is in the middle. And that's what they eat. Turn it into things like honey. And so if you see a bee, the best thing to do is just to observe it. Because it's out doing its thing. Serving its purpose. And although there are a lot of types of bees, it's just best to leave them alone. And here's a weird factoid. I'm 42 years old and I've for once been stung by a bee. Probably because I like to watch animals, but unless I know that they're safe to touch or play with, I usually just leave them be. That was very serendipitous. I did not mean that, but that works. Okay. And so I think I'm gonna make a butterfly kind of hanging out hidden here. So we have the butterfly's body. And so that's generally black, but it can come in all sorts of colors. And the one thing about butterflies is that if you touch their wings, they have really fine powder on their wings. And if you touch them, they kind of lose the ability to fly. So if a butterfly has already passed away and it's laying on the ground, being able to observe it and pick it up is very different than if it's alive and it needs to be able to fly around. Okay, so I need to draw little antennas. And some wings. And we're going to make kind of a cool design. And you can make your butterfly wings look any way you want to. I'm just gonna go kind of simple with mine. I'm gonna give it kind of a black edging. Sometimes you'll see bugs that have patterns that kind of look like eyeballs. And that's a defense mechanism. So that the thing that's hunting them thinks that something is looking at them. But it's actually just the pattern of the insect. And I think that that's pretty cool. That's a neat adaptation to have. Okay. And so-
Ms. Teresa, my mom used to say that she had eyes in the back of her head.
I can see how that could be useful, but... Yeah, so I'm going to make some petals facing this way. So we're gonna give them a different kind of texture than the petals that are facing this way. And I'm gonna make kind of lines going across. And that makes your picture have an interesting feel to it. A little more depth and layering. I really like flowers. I think it's really nice when people send them. And there's all sorts of shows, like if you're a gardener, you can, if you're a person who cultivates flowers, there's shows that you can compete to judge on who has the best. And I think that's kind of neat too, because that takes a lot of skill that I don't have. Something I guess I could learn. But I like succulents, which is another type of plant, because you just give them water and then they do their own thing. One of my favorite flowers is actually an orchid. And orchids are kind of neat because they'll often have multiple petals like this, but on a longer stem. But if you water them too much, they die pretty easily. So you only need to give them one or two ice cubes a week, and then that's enough water to keep them alive. Did you know that, Mr. Kevin?
I did not. Because I usually end up overwatering everything and killing it. So it's hard. I'm what you would call a person with two brown thumbs.
Oh, instead of a green thumb?
That's right.
Okay, alright. So if you want to draw other kinds of insects that might want to visit this rhododendron, that's really cool. I kind of like this for our state. Although we have lots of indigenous plants, we also have plants that were brought over from other places, like the cherry blossom tree from Japan. And they are all over the place. And they're pretty sizable. But the ones in Japan are much, much bigger because they're older. And they're one of my favorite flowers. They don't bloom for very long, but when they... But this time of year, it starts to snow cherry blossom petals. And I just think that that's really, really pretty. Okay. So if you want to draw some bees, that's cool too. If you want to draw multiple butterflies, that's pretty neat. In fact, I think I'm gonna draw another butterfly going here.
Yeah, he needs a little friend.
He does. So what should we name them? Let's see, since they're butterflies, I'm gonna name them after butterbrands. So how about one will be Carrie? And hmm...
Dairy Gold?
Carrie Gold. And how about the other one will be, I can't believe it's not butter. So... So those are gonna be my two names today. Alrighty, so here's my drawing. And this is kind of the stylified version. And if you want to, if you want to go more elaborate, you're making more realistic details, I suggest getting an image of a flower that's a technical drawing and then just try to copy it. Because what I did was I downloaded this one. And then I drew my own version of this one. And it gave me different ways that they were facing and the different textures, and I just thought that was kind of cool. And I found all of these images online using our computers, so... Okay. Oh, another thing that I found was this image here. And it has a lot of gray scaling, which means that it's not black or white, but there's a lot of different textures going on in here. And so I decided that it would be kind of cool to color over parts of it. I used the same color green here, but since this part of the drawing was already darker, it gave it a bit of depth. And this one had like two different tones inside the petal. And here's my little butterflies. And so the original drawing that I saw online, it was also yellow. And here's a little bee. It's in there. So that's another project you can do. If you don't want to draw the picture, you can just take an already existing picture and print it in black and white and then color over it. And so I brought my color pencils. So I'm going to make the inside flower yellow. And then I'm going to make mine kind of pinkish. Because that's what I saw, kind of pinkish-purple. And I'm going to be making mine realistic. So I'm going to be making my leaves have green leaves. Now, if you want to, you can actually use two different shades of the same color to give it a more interesting look. Or if you want to use watercolors, if you're using watercolors, just make sure that the pen that you're using won't run. So you're not getting smudges of black. And another thing that you can do is if you want to use watercolors, you can actually kind of paint them first and then get the general shape. And then use a black marker after it's already dried and draw over that. And that looks really cool too. I like watercolors. We'll have to do that sometime soon. Okay, so I want to make sure that I get all the parts of my flower. So some of the research that I was doing for this particular drawing showed all the parts of the plant, which would be a really cool addition to your art. I don't think I've ever gone up to this particular plant to smell it, so I'm not sure if it has a floral smell. Does anybody know if it does? And so sometimes they make perfumes out of plant extracts. I like the smell of roses. They're pretty strong though. Okay, one leaf to go. And it's okay if your pictures don't look like mine. I've been drawing for four decades. And lots and lots and lots of practice. But there are a lot of things, I don't know how to draw at all. And I need to practice those things. But I look forward to trying new and different things. Because you're never too old to learn. So I want to make my butterflies yellow. So I'm still gonna give them black tips because that's what my reference drawing looked like. So I took an idea and then I made it my own. And when we did the picture of the bear, I did the same thing. So I made it similar, but a little bit different. I forgot to make the black tipping on the butterflies. A long time ago, I used to teach preschool. And we grew butterflies in the classroom. And they went from caterpillar to chrysalis inside their cocoon, and then they became butterflies. And so that word is called metamorphosis. So it went from one thing to change into its adult form to look completely different than what it originally did. And I thought that that was pretty cool. We then released those butterflies into our garden that we had been growing for that season. So it continued that life cycle. I like butterflies. Some of the insects that you might see in a garden are like dragonflies. And they've actually been around since prehistoric times. And they used to be much, much bigger than they are now. Maybe one day, we can do drawings about dinosaur stuff and I'll bring in some of my dinosaur stuff. During my summers, I like to go on adventures with my family. And sometimes we'll go to places where you can dig for dinosaur fossils. And I think that that's kind of neat. So, okay. So what I'm gonna do is, since I have a bunch of little circles, I'm just gonna kind of color over them. So you don't have to color each and every dot. So you don't have to color each and every dot. And you can make it whatever color you want to. Flowers come in all sorts of shades. And if you haven't had a chance to go to Point Defiance, five mile drive is really nice. It's right next to the zoo. And there's a couple playgrounds out there too. And hiking trails. So Ms. Teresa might do that this weekend, where I go check out the Rhododendron Garden out there. Maybe take some pictures. Another area where they have flowers about this time of year, they might still actually be blooming, is the rose garden. And there's a fun story behind that. So there are so many different kinds of roses there because the community donated from their own gardens to make kind of a big garden where everybody can go to. And so the varieties of plants range in different colors and sizes and textures. And it's really, really pretty to see. They even have an archway that has flowers that will grow across from them or across them. And it's also right next to the pagoda, which used to be the old trolley station. Tacoma's pretty neat. We have a lot of history here. And you can go down by the waterfront, see some tide pools. I like to either go Ms. Teresa doesn't really run anymore, so I like to walk really, really fast. Or ride my bike around that area with my kiddos. Okay, so I'm going to keep on coloring. Do you have any questions, Mr. Kevin?
Not a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
We have a rhododendron in our backyard.
Do you? What color is it?
It is a deep purple flower with a lighter purple on the inside part of the petals.
That sounds really pretty.
They're beautiful. And there's all kinds of different rhododendrons. There's light blue ones, there's purple, there's violet, all kinds of colors.
I think that it would be really pretty to take a little bit of all of those colors and put them in a vase together. And today, I deliberately wore one of my flower shirts. And so I'm almost done with my coloring. But I would very much like to see your art. So if you could, please either email it or mail it to us. Or what was that portal that you guys were talking about before that the kiddos can use?
Flipgrid.
Okay, so if you want to import it into or attach it to Flipgrid. And then do they send it to us?
They upload a picture or a video.
Okay, so they can upload a picture or video and then send it to the following email address?
They can go to Flipgrid and it's all there.
Cool beans. Nice. Oh. I would very much love to see the art that you're creating out there. And any way you can get it to us, either by email or Flipgrid or by physical mail, that would be wonderful. And we'll even showcase it on the next show.
And they can also send it to tvclassroom@tacoma.k12.wa.us. Or you can mail it to the TV Classroom at 601 South 8th Street, Tacoma, Washington, 98405.
So one of the things that when I was a kid and I used to send art pieces into stuff that I was worried about was would I get my art thing back? Or was it kind of on display forever? You can make copies of your drawings before you send them to us. Or you could have somebody help you take a picture and also send it to us if you want to be able to keep the original. We also have lots of kids' art here at the Central Administration Building in our hallways. And we get lots and lots and lots of compliments on them from our visitors. So however you want to send it in, it works for us. So I am pretty much done with my drawing for the day, with my butterflies. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to sign my name at the bottom. And I'm going to draw a little flower next to my name. Okay, so that was a lot of fun. We'll see you guys next time. Bye.